Welcome. I don't know that I've seen this many smiling faces in here in a long time. Welcome to the Lee County Board of Education. I'm calling the meeting to order. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, but before we do, I was just informed that one of our previous chairs for the Board of Education lost his wife, Mark Akonish's wife. So if you'll please remember them in your prayers as well, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Let's have our moment of silence. Now if you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, we only have one person that signed up for public comments, and I would like, and I'm sure he already knows the rules as well. We limit your time to three minutes. We'd love to hear from you. We cannot respond to you directly for any concerns, but our superintendent would be more than glad to take care of that as well. So at this time, we would like to welcome up to the board that will ask it. Stephen Roman.
Madam Chair, Stephen Roman, 387 Hollybrook Road in Sanford. I teach science and math at Lee County High School. On March 14th, the Board adopted Policy 1305, the Parent-Guardian Bill of Rights. It's a very important policy. We want parents obviously to be involved in education. As an educator, I know that's going to impact what I do in the classroom every day, and I'm looking forward to guidance from the Board on how that's going to happen. It says that schools shall respect parents' guardians' values and beliefs. Parents' guardians have the right to instill in and nurture values and beliefs for their own children and make decisions concerning their children's health, education, and upbringing in accordance with their customs, faith, and family culture. That's a very, very broad statement and pretty much can encompass a lot of different scenarios. It follows up from the January meeting where a Board member said morals are up to parents to teach their children. That is not the school's job, period. Morals are a person's standard of behavior or belief concerning what is and is not acceptable for them to do. I read through the legal cases that recited in the policy, and they talk about the fundamental Fourth Amendment right of parents to oversee, control their children's care, Amish not sending their children to school, the Blessed Society of Sisters and their parochial school, which is all great, but it really didn't give me any guidance that I thought was going to help me in the classroom. So for instance, how do I deal with a student who comes from a family where the values are white supremacy? I respect that. How do I deal with a student who comes from a family where violence is a value, and that's how you resolve conflicts? You bring a gun to school as a six-year-old and shoot your teacher. How do I deal with someone who learns at home that hatred for people who say men can love men and women can love women is okay, and we should persecute them? I respect that. How do I, as a science teacher, teach the scientific theory of evolution when someone says, "I don't believe, my family, we don't believe evolution"? I guess we eliminate that from the curriculum. We don't have to cover that. I'm struggling because Policy 7305 for employees says, "No person shall be judged, subjected to stereotypes regardless of negative or positive, or marginalized based on race, gender, religion, preference, ethnicity, immigration status, socioeconomic status, ability, or any other identity group." But what if my values say, "Yes, it's okay to judge"? Then I have to respect that. It's really a quandary for me. I don't want to teach in a school where students don't feel safe. I don't want to teach in a school where students don't feel valued and feel they can be their true selves. I don't want to teach in a school where we can't read the Diary of Anne Frankreich in Florida because it contains a certain passage that people object to. So I look forward to guidance from the Board on how I'm going to be able to use this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Lee County Vision Statement. Mr. Lett.
Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Have the Code of Ethics, Mr. Kelly.
Code of Ethics for school board members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to the accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board, avoid solicitation, acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation or the business of the Board, avoid the misuse of public funds, or misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda for 4/11/2023.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add an item to new business to review the addition of the educational service delivery portion of the Evergreen Solutions Performance Audit Proposal to the audit scope of work.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the minutes.
There is- Madam Chair, I think we still have to approve the agenda as amended.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry. Would you like to make that motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thanks, Patrick. All right. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. We have our regular board meeting from 3:14/2023, our budget work session.
Madam Chair, I think the attorney has given us, I think we have to vote on the agenda.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Okay. Here in your opposition, the motion passes. Sorry about that. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. We have the regular board meeting, 3:14/2023, our budget work session, 3:16/2023, our public hearing and budget work session from 3:20/23. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Next, we have some announcements and reports, non-action items, and I believe the first one is the chairman's report. The Board members actually have a copy of what is about to be presented. Rebecca, are you there? This is what, this is a peer county analysis for the performance audit. The short slide is designed to identify which counties around our state might be used as peer counties against which we can measure our own county school system. I'm providing this information to our performance audit team. As you know, we have, we have a performance audit that's currently right in the process as we speak, and this is to assist them in conducting their assessment of our school system for both financial performance and academics performance. Next slide, please. And I know this is small, but I can tell you that Ms. Britt will have this up online, one day this week at least. If you can see this slide, you will see, I'll start by, started by gathering data from 20 counties that bear some resemblance to our only county in either school average daily membership, that's ADMs, or in medium household income, or in mean and average teacher salary. For each county, I captured the amount of the state, federal, and local per pupil expenditures, they call that PPEs, as well as total government funding. The cells in the orange denote each county that is within a reasonable statistical range of Lee County. Those cells reflect counties who are within 2,500 students in ADM, that's their students, and are 7,500 or so in dollars in median household incomes, or within 2,500 in average teacher pay. From these 20 counties, I found eight counties with all three of those ranges compared to Lee County. The eight peer counties I will compare to Lee County in the next few slides are Codwell, Franklin, Haywood, Pender, Rockingham, Stanley, Sari, and Wilson. Next slide, please. This slide shows, you note in the middle of the slide, you see the red arrow that goes through there, Lee County is right in the middle of the peer counties for average daily membership. Next slide, please. Note that Lee County is also precisely in the middle of the eight peer counties for medium household income at $48,873 per household in Lee County. Next slide, please. Not surprising, Lee County's average teacher pay ranks lowest among our eight peer counties. This bears further analysis during the performance audit, with the average teacher pay of being $51,284 in our county. We are about 1,200 a year lower than the average peer county. We are nearly 2,000 a year behind our top-paying peer county, which is Franklin County. And this may be a cause and effect. We have more entry-level teachers than our peer counties, but still, the low-average salary level needs much further investigation. Now, as we look further into the funding, next slide, I'm sorry. Okay. As we look further into funding from the government sources, found several disturbing facts. On this slide, you will see we rank next to last among our peer counties for state-level funding per student. We are drawing nearly 500 per pupil less than the average here. We are getting $602 less than Sari County, which is at the top. Clearly, the state formula puts Lee County at a very serious disadvantage here. I am hopeful our performance auditor will determine if there is anything we can do to improve that level of funding. I'd like to point out here that we get precisely the same level of state funding for our students that Orange County receives, 6,454. This makes no sense whatsoever. Orange County is one of the richest or two, three counties, the top two or three richest counties in our state, with an enormous wealth and a capacity for local spending. This fact alone shows that either the formula for the state fund is broken, or that Lee County is failing to provide justification for higher funding at these levels. Next slide. The federal funding level on this slide, this slide are even more worse than the state. We are dead last among our peer counties for federal funding. We get nearly 200 less than the average and more than 500 less per child than Sari County at the top. Next slide. Note this slide, that we are among the top four peer counties in local PPE, local funding. We spend nearly $200 more than the median of our peer counties. So it isn't fair to say that local funding from our Board of County Commissioners is inadequate, per se. Next slide. Finally, on this slide, you will see we rank last among the peer counties in overall funding for our students. We are $400 or so lower than the median, and we spend $1,100 less than the top of our peer counties. Next slide. Here are the takeaways from this analysis. We need to examine our state and federal formula to see if there's anything we're failing to report or optimize for funding purposes. If we could raise our funding levels from the state and federal authorities by just $500 a year, that would gain us another $4.5 million each year. That would go a long way towards teacher salaries and instructional programs that we need. Our performance audit should look closely at this problem with the state and federal funding, and next, we need to evaluate and compare our teacher demographics to our peer counties to determine whether we are disadvantaged by having too many entry-level teachers. I note that from this study that our local spending appears to be on par with our peer counties. Hopefully, we do not need to burden our county commissioners or our local taxpayers in order to make some corrections within our school system. Finally, I think that these eight peer counties can be used effectively to compare and contrast our academic achievement and growth performance as they seem reasonable, close to the financial status and size. The way ahead on this findings is, there's been a conversation with our Senator Bergen, who's actually with the Education Division, trying to look into this as well. But most importantly for the Board to be aware of is that the performance auditor, which we've already paid, who's doing our performance audit, they are also looking at this as well. And that's the end of that part. The next thing that I have is, I wanted to give a shout out at SAGA, Sanford Area Growth Alliance. We actually had the Lee County Education Foundation come out, and I, for one, was not aware of the scholarships that goes to teachers and some of the things that they're doing, and we will try to get that up for you as well. And the last thing is, this Board will have a special called meeting on, on Thursday, April 20th, right here at 6:00 PM, and the purpose of that announcement will be posted in accordance to our policy and to the open meeting laws next week. Thank you. You're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It gives me great pleasure this evening to recognize four of our students who are going to Governor's School, and I'm going to ask Dylan Crockett to come forward. Dylan works with our middle school AIG and Science Departments, and I'll allow him to recognize our students and their outstanding accomplishments. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know, the North Carolina Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for gifted and talented high school students in the nation, having been founded in 1963. Students who are selected to attend this prestigious opportunity spend four weeks working, thinking, and innovating together on a college campus away from home. All students participate in advanced courses where they get opportunities to think critically, creatively, and philosophically. They also attend specific courses in academic areas and the arts. There are two campuses for North Carolina's Governor's School. There's Governor's School East at Meredith College, and there's Governor's School West at Winston-Salem State University. We have four very talented juniors this year who were selected to attend Governor's School this year. For those of you who don't know, each school district is only guaranteed one spot to go to Governor's School. So for us to have four students accepted this year really speaks to their remarkable talent, that they beat out thousands of students across the state. Students first have to apply at a local level, and a local nominating committee makes the decision who gets promoted to move to the state level. Over 1,700 students moved on to the state level across school districts this year, and only 800 were accepted. So I'd like to introduce to you these four students tonight, and if those four students could come on up, and Mrs. Poston, who is one of their principals. Y'all can come up and stand on either side. First, we have Drake Bowen here. Drake's parents are Jamie and Sandra Bowen, who I think you've met. Drake started his education here in Lee County Schools at J. Glenn Edwards Elementary School. He moved up to East Lee Middle School, and he's currently attending Lee Early College and CCC. He participates in 4H, Young Commissioners, D&amp;D, Chess Club, and Math Clubs at LEC. When he graduates, he plans on attending North Carolina State University's Engineering Program and to major in Computer Science. He would like to shout out all of the staff at LEC and CCC for just being generally helpful, but in specific, he would like to give a shout out to Mr. Testa, who is the CCC advisor at LEC, for being an excellent advisor, as well as Ms. Timberlake, who is his principal, for motivating him to apply for this opportunity. His math teacher, Mr. Smith, says Drake is probably the most mathematically capable student I have ever taught. Drake is not only good at math, he goes out of his way to find new math topics to learn about. He enjoys mathematical conversations and has a bright mind that will benefit deeply from being surrounded by like-minded individuals at Governor's School. If you couldn't tell, Drake is going to attend in the area of mathematics at Governor's School East at Meredith College this summer. To my left, we have Evie Eller, whose parents are Debbie and Donnie Eller, and whose brother is also here, O'Connell, who is a student at LEC. Originally going to school in Ash County up on the far northwestern corner of the state, Evie attended Blue Ridge Elementary School, continued her studies at A.B. Combs Elementary School in Apex, Dunn Middle School in Harnett County, and has been at Southernly High School these past three years. Evie participates on the women's tennis team, and in fact, in the 2022 season, she and her partner were recognized as conference champions. She was also recognized as the MVP. Evie participates in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Skills USA National Honor Society, and the Photography Club, and next week, she'll be inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. She wants to thank Mrs. Shanna Roberts, who is her Adobe teacher, who taught her how to use the Adobe suite and to become professionally certified in Adobe Photoshop Illustrator and web authoring. Mrs. Roberts says Evie realizes her skill level grows daily, but she works with beginning students, breaking down complex steps into chunks. Evie encourages, guides, and facilitates the learning of the entire class. Many students love Adobe, but few have the patience, skill, and expertise to both use and show others the processes. Evie would like to attend university and complete a four-year degree in graphic art design, and she'll be attending Governor's School West at Winston-Salem State University in the area of visual arts. Also here to my right is Olivia McBride, also from Southernly High School. Olivia's parents are Ryan McBride and Brittany Garner. She is also a product of Lee County Schools, having attended Tremway Elementary, Stanley Middle School, and Southernly. She's a member of the FFA Skills USA and the National Honor Society. She has also worked at the Fairview Dairy Bar since her sophomore year, and she volunteers with the Partnership for Children and Families. Her Spanish teacher, Mrs. Clark, says Olivia is helpful and honest. She is always willing and looking to grow. She is a very responsible student and always does the right thing. Her supervisor at the Partnership for Children and Families, Ms. Avalos, says that Olivia is passionate about her future and has a strong drive to succeed. She has seen Olivia's leadership grow, and she feels confident that this opportunity to attend Governor's School will only further her growth. She strongly believes that Olivia will be a tremendous asset to others, as she has demonstrated leadership skills throughout her volunteer work at the Partnership. Olivia would like to attend NC State University and major in animal science or zoology, and she'll be attending Governor's School East at Meredith College in the area of natural science. And last but not least, to my left, Ms. Brianna Munoz, also attending Southernly High School. Her parents are Karina Mejia and Renee Mejia. She went to elementary school at Hemlock Park Elementary School all the way up in Long Island. Coming down here to the south, she has been at Southernly these past three years. She played softball from her eighth-grade year through her sophomore year, and she is part of the Battle of the Books Club at Southernly, as well as SOMOS Carolina, which is a Latinx student outreach group, part of the Center for Global Initiatives at UNC Chapel Hill. She is considering applying to NC State University and UNC Chapel Hill next year to study psychology. Her American History teacher, Mr. Rayner, says Brianna's engaging and strong personality distinguishes her as a student. Brianna was eager to do well in class, but beyond working to get an A, she blended her skill with curiosity and empathy regarding the different historical topics we examined in America's past. Taking off my district coordinator hat, I would also like to say, having taught Brianna in Latin and Olivia in Biology, that these are extraordinary students, both phenomenal, with a supreme work ethic, and they're academic shining stars at their schools. Brianna will be attending Governor's School West at Winston-Salem State University in Spanish. I would also like to thank the principals and counselors at Lee Early College and Southernly High School, Ms. Poston included, for their encouragement of these students. I'd like to thank their families for supporting them in this adventure. It, of course, takes a village. So these are our four wonderful students who will be attending this prestigious opportunity this summer.
One, two, three. Excellent. Congratulations.
Madam Chair, I'd like to point a personal privilege, a moment, to go and hug that representative.
We'll take a break for a second. Says an alibi. Running away. He knows mom's coming. I was wondering who's glowing more. You are the principal. Yes. Back to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly a well-deserved honor for our four students. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Waller to come forward for our Clean School of the Month.
Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Brown, I'd like this afternoon to welcome Ms. Andrea Cummings to the stadium, to the stand. Is she? Okay, okay. Dr. Halston will be here to accept the Clean School Award this month for Tremway Elementary.
Who's this, her sister? Do you have claim to?
My Miss Cummings sister. Is that what she said?
Yeah, people do say we look alike. I may have, should have been prepared to make comments. I'm not sure that I was. Ms. Cummings asked me to attend. I want to say that we are privileged to work alongside the custodial staff that we have, not just because they do an excellent job. not just because they do an excellent job, but because they make a very big effort to be part of our school community. If you ever come on our campus, you will see them consistently interact with families and kids and just make themselves a part of the school, and I think that's as important, if not more important, than keeping our school clean and safe, which they do an excellent job of as well. So we're very honored to work alongside them. And this is Mr. McCollin, one of our...
One of our custodians.
They made me come.
Very, very hardworking gentleman, and of course, we have Mr. Boykin, our head custodian, who's been with us for, with the school, I should say, because I'm the newbie, but with the school for a very long time. So an excellent staff, and Ms. Cummings, and I feel very fortunate to have those folks with us, and we appreciate the honor.
You have to bring it back.
Couple of final things, Madam Chair. Last week was Assistant Principal Appreciation Week. I want to thank our assistant principals at our schools for all the work that they put out for our students and our parents and community. They do a great job, and we're very appreciative to have them. And we did a little celebrating for them before we went on spring break, and then they got spring break, so that ended up being pretty good, I think. Also, I just want to thank all the fire folks and police who responded last night to the fire at the old Jonesboro property. Appreciate their support and help, and we will continue to keep the board updated as that moves forward. Finally, over the last couple of weeks, as you know, we have received some anonymous, non-credible threats at a couple of our traditional high schools. As you also know, we have put in place metal detectors at those two schools to come in, and that has gone pretty well. We've adjusted our technology as we've gone along with that, and it's gone pretty well. We're appreciative for everybody's patience and hard work in trying to make that happen. And even today, when we had an anonymous, non-credible threat today, our folks did a great job in handling that, our students in handling it, and I feel very confident that our SOAs and Sheriff's Department and administrators will get to the bottom of that. So pretty confident in that. At this time, I will turn it back over to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. So we have a financial report. Ms. Jones?
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have before you the February financials, reported by fund and purpose. Open to any questions that you have on that particular report? The second report that you have is your COVID funding update as of the end of February. That is broken out by PRC. It gives the expiration date, as well as the amount allotted, any additional allotments, the amount spent, the amount encumbered, and the amount remaining. Next report that you have is the COVID funding update, the pie graph, and we have that just for those of you that are visual, for the total amount spent, amount encumbered, and the amount remaining. Then we have the bar graph, the same. We have the mental health expenses broken out in a pie chart, just to show you how much has been spent in regards to mental health. And then last but not least, you have the board expenses. You will note that we, this does reflect the budget amendment that will be later in new business for the additional funding for board expenses. So that is reflected within that report.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on those particular reports? Okay. Next, we have the school board attorney.
Madam Chair, I don't believe I have any in your report.
I know you don't, sir. We just want to tell you happy birthday, of all things. Does anyone want to sing to him?
I don't know if that'd be a good idea.
Yes, no punishing him. But that's why you're on there. All right, next, we have our committee reports. We'll start with curriculum and instruction.
Madam Chair, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met last on March 15th at Southernly High School. We were informed greatly by a panel of teachers talking about the letters training and the science of reading, and I hurriedly took several notes, but it doesn't capture all that is, all the good that is happening because of this training. It's about 160 hours, if I remember that correctly, that number correctly, if I got that right, and that's a lot of hours that our teachers and staff, administration have put into making this successful, and that was a wonderful introduction, I think, for all of us that were there to know more about, we hear about letters, but now we know a little, a whole lot more about it than we did before we went in, and so I appreciate Dr. Dawson back making all of that possible. Our next curriculum and instruction committee is Wednesday, May 10th, 3:30, at B.T. Bullock Elementary School. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have facilities and technology.
So Madam Chair, there was no facilities and technology meeting held last month. I would just note that work does continue on the long-term capacity planning, so the committee has gathered some data from the county planning office and is using that to compile. We basically got a draft report to assess capacity needs across our school system. That is not quite ready for full board review, but we will be working this coming month to refine that presentation, and we'll bring any action items for the board. The next facility and technology meeting will be held April 25th at 4:30 PM in the Heinz Education Building.
And next, we have the finance. That's you again.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair, again. So this one's a bit longer, so bear with me. We had several items to discuss in Finance Committee this month. The first one is a bid for bus cameras that is located on the consent agenda tonight. So just a bit of detail there. So Justin Covert, hopefully I said that last name right, provided three bids to the committee. Those are available in the packet tonight for full review, and these quotes are for replacing or fitting the entire fleet of our buses with updated internal and external cameras. Obviously, those cameras are used to review any issues that occur, you know, whether it's traffic safety or issues on the buses during the routes. It was consensus of the committee to approve the bid from Safety Vision, which is a company that has provided camera installation services to our county previously and has proven to have good customer service. That bid actually also came in as the lowest bid by quite a bit of the three at a cost of $232,049.18, and will be paid for using ESER funding. Again, this is on the consent agenda tonight, and it was consensus of the committee to approve that. The next one I've got is, we had another discussion on teacher assistant and bus driver job coupling. So I got quite a bit of feedback after last month's meeting on that from several members of the public and school staff, so we kind of used those as talking points to have some more discussion. Couple highlights there. So Mr. Conway noted that there was a discussion a few weeks back with assistant principals to discuss management of bus routes and complications that are commonly experienced, to see what can be done to help with that. It was also noted that there has been an open job posting for part-time bus driver positions on our website for, I don't remember the time, but it was expressed, it was a very long time, that that has been unfilled. So there were a few members of the community that expressed interest in possibly applying for a role like that, so I would encourage anybody listening to do that. It is available on the website. And then at the end of that discussion, so I just asked administration to identify any areas from the discussion and the feedback that we had that they thought might be helpful moving forward, hopefully toward eventually decoupling the TA bus driver positions, and just asked that they would bring those things to committee for evaluation, and then obviously to the full board if they need our support there. And there is an item on discussion for tonight during the budget discussion that touches that topic. The next one is, we did briefly discuss, again, that 2023-24 budget update. I will get into that in more detail when we get to that agenda item. The committee reviewed several budget amendments that are listed under new business, so we'll talk about more under that item. Next, the committee discussed the fiscal year ending 2022 finance audit that required two extensions and has now been submitted to our local governing body. The original due date for that, I believe, was November 2023, so I want to talk to that just a little bit after comments at the last meeting. So I would just say that as the finance chair, so I was not aware that that audit was past due until mid-March, when the chair called and asked me for some details on what was going on with that, and to be completely honest, I was pretty embarrassed because I had no clue what she was talking about. So I do take, you know, both being just a board member in general, but being the finance committee chair very seriously, so that was not a good moment for me. So there were, there was a finding in the audit itself and a couple of issues raised, but to me, the biggest problem brought to light just with the whole audit is a communication failure that we had, so I want to talk just briefly about that. So in the committee, I did express some frustration with lack of communication from central office, because there are folks there whose, you know, whose job it is to keep us as board members informed of issues like this. That didn't happen, so we discussed that in committee. I'm not going to rehash that. But talking a bit to the timeline here, so the first extension for that audit was signed back in, it was 30th of November of '22 by the current board chair, Ms. Bowen, at the time. So I just kind of, to me, that happened, so it was after our election, ahead of new board member swearing in, and that was not given as part of the orientation process, right? So I feel like that's kind of a failure as the board to provide that orientation, because I think that's important for us to know. So then again, I've already mentioned, you know, central office staff that we talked about this. I think both of those issues, so amongst the board and between central office to the board, are both blatant communication failures by people who are responsible for doing orientation and keeping board members up to date. So having said that, though, I am just hopeful, moving forward, that, you know, as a team, our board can learn from those communication failures that we had and move forward. So I want to thank the Policy Committee. I know there's been some work done to update a couple of policies regarding orientation and communication. And then, Madam Chair, I do appreciate you working through this extension issue that we had to make sure that we stayed in compliance, and just say that I believe the orientation manual that I know you're working on, I think, will be very beneficial going forward to members in the future. So that's all I've got to say about that. So after talking about last year's audit, we discussed the contract for the fiscal year ending 2023 audit. So did have a bit of discussion with the board attorney regarding some of the wording in that contract, just to verify that, I guess the short story there is, it's not believed that we need any additional verbiage in that contract to tighten up anything to do with this communication issue, and we believe the auditor did do a good job of providing the communication that he's supposed to. So with that review by our attorney, it was unanimous consensus of the committee to approve that audit contract for the 2023 fiscal year audit, and that has been placed on the consent agenda for approval tonight. We went through the student accident insurance policy, so very quickly there, that is also available in the packet tonight for review. The highlight is that rates remain unchanged for the school system, and parents who opt into that will actually see a small rate reduction, so good news there. Again, that's on consent agenda for approval tonight. For contracts over $50,000, the only one there is for language interpreter service, and that is based on a change in a student's IEP that required some additional hours. Again, that information is available in the packet for tonight for full review and committee consensus to approve that. And then the last thing I wanted to touch from Finance Committee is, we did have some discussion about the board's, the monthly financial report that we receive, so talked a bit with Ms. Jones about coming up with some more information that would be beneficial to the board to show us financial status of the school system. So just a few quick things that were tossed out there was perhaps tracking monthly spending per student as a school system, just so we can kind of see how that moves month to month, unexpected expenses from the previous month, large project financial updates, food program updates. Several different things were discussed, but the action item I took away is to provide Ms. Jones with some examples of things that we would like to see as a board, and we will work to add those to that monthly financial report. So more to come on that. And with that, Ms. Chair, that's all I've got for Finance Committee.
Hey. That's a lot. Now, we have Policy Committee. Mr. Gaster?
Madam Chair, we met March 28th and went over a few policies for first reading and a few policies for second reading that's coming up tonight on the consent agenda. Mostly, we just verbiage change on a couple of them, and we did add some things, especially on the annual independent audit policy. Other than that, we'll talk about all those later. Our next meeting will be April 18th at 5:00 PM at the Heinz Education Building at the basement, and that's all I've got, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we were going to have Mr. Anderson Smith. I'm sorry, not Mr. Smith, Dale Smith is coming up to talk to us and prepared to answer any questions that you have in reference to the audit. I think we've been over that very thoroughly with the central staff, and just a couple points I'd like to make is that the rationale behind maintaining this auditor under the consent agenda is for consistency and due to the fact we don't want to be late again for another audit. But most important, before he even begins and you get the findings, I would like this board to understand, back in 2018, we had like seven pages of things, and we had material weakness and we had significant weakness. For those who don't understand what that means, a material weakness is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control. That is reasonably, possibly, that a managerial mismanagement or entity of financial control could occur that would not be prevented or detected or corrected on an untimely basis. A significant deficiency, which is less than a material weakness, I just wanted to make sure someone had a little question about that. It's less than a material weakness, and if you look in the past, we are in the process. We are, I believe that we are improving. We've got open transparency, and I'm sure that you'll welcome any questions from our auditor. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Hope all of you are doing well. I think each of you have received an electronic PDF copy, and you should have a hard copy also of the audit report. The report's fairly lengthy, I think it's around 75 pages long, so I'll be going over this evening just a few pages from the report that I think will be of the most importance and interest to you all in overseeing the finances of the school district. The audit report covers two main areas that we're required to issue reports on. The financial statement section covers the first 59 pages of the report, and that's followed by the compliance section, starting on page 60. So we'll start out by turning to page 13, and we'll look at the governmental fund balances of the district as of June 30th. And while you're turning to page 13, I just want to quickly point out that on pages one through three of the report is the financial statement opinion letter on the financial section, and it is a clean, unmodified opinion, which is exactly what you want to receive, and that basically means that we feel as though that the amounts and the disclosures in the report are reliable and free from any sort of material misstatements or errors. And if everyone's on page 13, we'll be focusing on the first column, which is your general fund, and there at the top, you've got assets, and total assets were $7,819,210, and assets were primarily made up of cash and cash equivalents, which were $7,162,152. And there in the middle of the page, you had liabilities of $2,299,427, and your assets minus liabilities gives you the district's fund balance at June 30th, which is the next to last number in that first column. which is the next to last number in that first column of $5,519,783. And that fund balance amount represents an increase of $434,000 over the fund balance that was reported at June 30th, 2021. And I'll just point out that most of the districts that we audit saw their local fund balance increase significantly during both 2020 and, or actually 2021 and 2022, primarily due to the receipt of all of the federal COVID funding that flowed through the district. The district was just able to, to save some of its local funding in the process of, of using those federal COVID dollars. Unassigned fund balance is now at about 25.8% of general fund expenditures. It was right at that same level at June 30th, 2021, so not much of a change, which we do feel like is an adequate fund balance level for a district this size. It represents about three months of general fund expenditures, and that's just a metric that's used to evaluate whether or not fund balance is considered to be at an adequate level. And for comparison purposes, your child nutrition program, if they accumulate more than three months' worth of, of cash, they have to come up with a, with a, with a spend down plan. So now, we don't think y'all's ca, fund balance is excessive by any means, but just as a measure, I think y'all do have a good fund balance level based on comparison with other districts that we audit. Costs do seem to be rising in, in virtually all areas in the district right now. Your retirement rate, health insurance rates, fuel costs, utility costs, all of those things are going up dramatically, and I think you all know that, and we do feel like that these costs are going to weigh more heavily on the district once the federal COVID funding expires here in a couple of years. So we do think it's a good idea as a board and just from a managerial perspective to try to get your fund balance levels as high as you can for when those extra funds do expire here in the next couple of years. I know back around 2010, 2011, when we had the, the last financial crisis, the federal government issued a lot of funds back then, for those of you that were around, it was called ORA funding back then. And, and most districts that we audited back then saw their fund balances go way up during the 2011 to 2012, 13 period. But then soon as that ORA funding expired, fund balance level started dropping back off because districts were still left, and, and, you know, with, with some inflationary increases and then, you know, staffing increases. So again, we do think it's a good idea to, to try to build those fund balance levels up right now, like, like you've been doing the past couple of years. Reading across on your, that fund balance line that we just looked at, that next to last line, your state public school fund and federal grants fund, they both show zero fund balance, which is normal. Those funds both spend all of the dollars they receive in the year that they receive them. Your restricted revenue fund has an ending fund balance of $3,365,805, and that represents an increase of about $931,000 over the, the previous year's fund balance. And the revenues in this fund primarily are restricted in nature. You've got like NC pre-K, Medicaid revenues, ROTC revenues that flow through there, but you do have some unrestricted monies as well. You've got indirect costs that goes through there, fees, tuition, things like that, so you've got a little bit of a mixture in that fund. Capital outlay fund had an ending fund balance of $2,586,845 at June 30th, 2022, and that was an increase of $629,000, and that fund balance is restricted for capital outlay purposes. And the next column is your individual schools, and they had an ending fund balance of $792,102, and that was an increase of about $52,000. And that amount basically represents the cash balances of all of the schools combined as of June 30th. So all of the governmental funds showed increases in fund balance last year, which, you know, from an audit standpoint, we feel like that's always good to see. Did anyone have any questions on, on this page before we move on?
Any questions?
All right, let's go to page 59, and we'll look at the school food service program. All right, and page 59 shows the revenues and expenditures of the school food service fund for the year ended June 30th, 2022. And if you look at the, the last row that's got three columns to it, about three quarters of the way down, you've got a line that says net change in fund balance. And you look at the middle column, and that shows the actual results for the year, and you've got the number $2,339,019. And that is the increase in fund balance that the school nutrition fund reported for the year ended June 30th, 2022. And in the previous year, the program reported a profit of $605,000, and in the, or in the 2021 year, and then in the 2020 year, it reported a loss of about $580,000. So the program has really shown dramatic improvement the past two years, going from a loss of $580,000 to a profit this past year of $2,339. As would be expected with students returning to the classroom during the 2022 year, USDA revenues increased significantly due to the number of meals served going up dramatically. And that was the main factor that, that contributed to the increase in fund balance in the school food service program. And also, the USDA reimbursement rates were higher last year than the 2022 year. And in addition, the USDA was reimbursing 100% of meals served, and y'all probably already know that. And so going into this, this current year, they won't be reimbursing at 100%. You'll go back to doing the, or you're in the process of, you know, serving meals based on applications, free, reduced, denied, the way it used to be back prior to COVID. So we've been cautioning boards, telling them, don't expect, you know, fund balances to go up in this current year as they did the past two years, because most districts we audit, they did see their fund balance in child nutrition go up a good bit the past two years because of the 100% federal reimbursements that districts received. The district also, the program's got cash balances at year end of about $3.2 million. That, that was an increase of $2.2 million. So again, I think overall, the program's in very good financial shape as of June 30th, Any questions on school food service program?
I have a question, but it may not be necessarily tied so much to the audit. When you're talking about reimbursement at 100% of meals served, that's regardless to whether that is a full pay, reduced lunch pay, or free pay?
For, yeah, for the 2021 year and the 2022 year, the USDA allowed every district in the state to be reimbursed 100%. You didn't really...
So for, for a full pay family, they're basically paying for, the meal has been paid for twice?
Well, the full pay family didn't have to pay. They, so everybody ate free, is what it amounted to.
Okay, in fiscal, last fiscal year. I copy.
That's right. So if you, if you look at this page, look at, look at the very top line, you see the food sales line?
Yep.
$12,000.
Right.
That was basically just supplemental items that were sold, whereas in, you go back to like 2019, 2018, that number would probably be closer to $1 million for, for the full pay students. And, and so you'll probably see that, that line will go up a good bit.
Oh, the large quantities of gummies and, and drinks and so forth.
Yep.
I know where, where that money goes.
Yeah.
The candy wrappers that go in my washing machine.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the child nutrition program? Okay, on page, starting on page 60, as I mentioned earlier, is the first of three letters that we issued relating to our compliance testing over the board's internal controls and expenditure of state and federal grant awards. And a summary of these three letters can be found, starting on page 68. We're required each year to perform compliance audits on various large state and federal grants received by the district. For the 63022 year, we were required to perform compliance audits on the state public school fund, child nutrition program, and COVID-19 state and local fiscal recovery funds, education stabilization funds, and emergency connectivity funds. And we're required to test a significant amount of payroll and general disbursement transactions, as well as testing of other various grant-specific requirements. And we had to do a good bit more testing the past two years due to all of the federal fund, COVID funding that was received. And we're happy to report that the, two of the letters that relate to the state and federal funding are both clean, unmodified opinions, and there were no findings, no question costs, no internal control weaknesses noted related to the state and federal funding that flowed through the district for the June 30, 2022 year. So that's, that's always good to see. Now, the other letter that I mentioned, there's three letters, there's another letter called an internal, we call it an internal control letter. And we did report one finding that's detailed on page 69, so if you would turn over to page 69, we'll talk about it for a moment. And the write-up for that finding starts there in the middle of the page, finding 2201. And as noted in that finding, the, the finance department implemented a software conversion in January of 2022, which contributed to various account reconciliations not being completed in a timely manner during the second half of the June 30th, 2022 year. And the issue did result in the audit having to be extended to allow management time to get those account reconciliations caught up, and we're happy to report that once we were provided the reconciliations, no significant issues were noted, and it appears that all accounts were properly reconciled. This finding did not result in any lost funding, question costs, or any kind of budget violations having to be reported. And talking to Ms. Jones, the reconciliation issues have been resolved and should not be an issue going forward. We had Ms. Jones provide us the bank reconciliations for February of 2023, so the most recent month that would be available for the bank reconciliations to be completed, and you, and we would expect those to be done at this point, and they were caught up, and we reviewed those and tested them, and everything looked good. And so I, I do think that, you know, we shouldn't see an issue with the bank reconciliations for the June 30, 2023 audit.
Have you audited any other counties that have gone through this software conversion?
We, we have. We've, we've seen other ones go through it and, you know, have various issues. Sometimes it, you know, can delay the audit, sometimes not, but, you know, you just don't know what you're going to get into when it comes to software conversions. That's, that's the problem.
Anyone else have any questions? As we noted before, there's, we have deficiencies, significant deficiencies, but we also have other findings. We all received a letter from you stating at June the 30th, 2022, the state bank account reconcile to an overdraft balance of $81,407. This overdraft balance is reported to the state public fund, and will require funding from the general fund to replenish the overdraft balance. My question is, once this is reported to the state public school fund, what, what happens after that? Do they just come back to make sure that we take care of this overdraft?
If you were to talk to the state, they would say everything's fine. This is, this is really just a Lee County Schools general ledger issue, and really the only reason that we, that we pointed this out in this letter, and we don't really consider this to be a significant issue, otherwise we would have put it as a finding in the, in the audit report. It's more of informational because a few years back, y'all did have a, a pretty big issue with the, the state bank account reconciliations. The state actually took away $150,000 or so dollars from Lee County Schools in error, and y'all didn't get that money back. And so I was just more or less making you guys aware that, okay, this account's showing an $81,000 negative balance, but the explanation is the money came over from the state, and due to the, the software conversion, the link, Trent handles ACH items differently than Serenic did, and so there, I think there was a manual process to send that money back to the state account. Well, that didn't happen, so the, the bulk of that $81,000 negative balance in your state cash account, that is sitting in your local bank account. So it's really just a cross between the local account and the state account. So there's no money missing, it's just, that's why the state account is showing the negative balance. And we do see issues all across the state with that state bank account. It's, I wish they would do something about it. It causes way more problems than, than it's worth.
Now, I could be wrong, but we kind of look at you kind of like our attorney. You tell us what we need to hear, not what we want to hear, and that's okay. But if you don't mind, I would like to share with the board something that you shared with me, and I will not say the other school's name, but he made a comment when I called to get some clarification, and he says, if you really want to see a bad school, you might want to go here. And I won't say the school's name. And then he said, and then I said, well, here is our objective. We want to be the one when they say, if you see a good school, what's the best school in North Carolina? I want you to be able to say Lee County. That's our goal. And he shared with me, back in 2015, we were actually one of those that you chose. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, we picked Lee as, as one to get looked at. It was such a, a good audit.
I think that's good. And we have, just so you understand where the board comes, we, we read, I think everybody has read through all this, and we looked at control measures. We've changed our policies and, as referenced, as far as communication goes, and we're going to have a little bit more additional reporting. And I think the board should actually be grateful to Ms. Jones, who provided those monthly reports, or we may not have had all this stuff in order. Am I correct to say that, sir? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Does the board have any other questions or comments?
I just want to say one thing, and that was that as far as the switch over to Link and some of the drama that that entailed, that was communicated in the finance committee meetings and so forth last year. The then-finance chair is no longer on this board, but I just, I, I don't want it to be made to sound like we were not aware of the software troubles. We were aware of the software troubles. At the time at which I was given the extension, it was kind of like, the, the way it was presented to me was that they need more time to complete the audit. They're under obligation to complete the audit, and we're under obligation to have an audit. Can you sign this document that allows them to continue the audit? And obviously, at that point, that's what we pay him to do, is finish an audit. I don't want to hold them up with a sheet of paper that says, no, you know, Dale, I want you to stop work and let us be in default. So I just want to kind of clarify the steps. Could it have been communicated better? Absolutely, it could. And as you pointed out, we were in the post-election, pre-swearing in, no chairs of committees left on the board in function, you know? And so I, I just, could it have been communicated better? Absolutely. I'll take the mea culpa on that, but I don't want it to be perceived that we were, had the wool drawn, you know, drawn over our eyes, that we were not aware of this software. In fact, Ms. Jones and some of her team were teaching the Link people how to implement their own software at one point, and so, don't, I just wanted to put that out there for, for the purpose of recognizing that our people are, are quite skilled at what they do, and I'm very, very grateful for the way that they worked. And Dale has been a fabulous person to talk with and work with over the past several years. This is six years that I've been on the board, non-consistent six years, and the audits are always great, and he does a fantastic job of explaining what's going on. I've seen the good, I've seen the bad, and I've seen more good than bad, and that's, that's a testament to the whole district and the work that they do in this. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may also, just real quick, I guess as, as finance committee chair, I, I intend to, going forward here, as, as we do the, the next fiscal year audit, to just add a, a agenda item, just to get a brief update on how the audit's going, are we having any issues, you know, just, nothing terribly formal, but just to keep that communication open.
Now, we may be reaching out to you since after tonight's meeting, you may be the next. When would you start that audit if this is approved tonight? When would the next one start?
Probably within the next month.
Okay. And that being said, the control measures, once they ask those things, I think we've made that very clear. It is not anything that you've done, there's nothing that finance has done, we had a failure to communicate regardless of how it happened, and we were taking care of that, and we're moving forward, and we have, that's also in a part of the orientation packet. I'm extremely proud of all the things that the board has brought so far, and the fact that they're actually paying attention and reading the audits, that's very impressive. We've made great, great strides since I've been on this board. I remember a year when I came in, the audit was sitting in my chair, and Patrick was here then, I think. And now we get it, and we've got plenty of time to read, review, and, and that's good for us, but it's bad for you because then we have more questions, you know? But we do appreciate you and look forward to hopefully working with you next year, and I want us to be the one that you say, that's the best one. Okay? Thank you, Dale.
All right, thank y'all.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we've reached into Dale. Now we are up to unfinished business. Mr. Gaster, please.
So, Madam Chair, like I stated before, in our policy meeting...
So, Madam Chair, like I stated before, in our policy meeting on March the 28th, we had several, not several, we had three, we have actually four policies in for first reading. And basically, in these policies on first reading, was some discussion that we discussed. And going from, so the first one was student dress and appearance, was just some changes in the wording, to change in paragraph three of page one, where it states, "Student dress and grooming must be appropriate and safe, as long as it does not disrupt the learning or educational environment." To follow along with the list of items that's already listed in the policy, that states that the following are inappropriate and not permitted, that way it will still contain those items that are already listed in the existing policy. So it was just a little bit of changing in the paragraph for that. And that was accepted and made a motion to come to the board for first reading tonight. The next one was first aid and emergency healthcare. So the, it was just policy updates on that one. It was nothing, you know, really special. It was just some verbiage that was changed, more or less. And then the next one was the annual independent audit, which we've talked about a lot tonight. And in that one was the addition to add the part of the policy where it stated that the finance officer was to report to the board monthly during the audit process, to notify the board of all, everything going on, to keep this transparency and the communication open. That was the main thing that was added to that policy. And then, in our second set, was the policies for second reading, was the student insurance program, the child abuse and related threats to child safety, the code of student conduct and policy of student wellness. And in those, the student dress code was taken policy 4316 and 4301, and to the recommendation of Dr. Annie Bryan, to be combined, because they both kind of relayed to each other and created in a policy 4301. So it was kind of combining those two policies. And the threats to child safety was just some verbiage, once again, was language, some... So basically, like one, it says, it was a, take away one out, but the one is on page one, where it says, "The superintendent shall develop any necessary procedures for making a report or otherwise implementing this policy." So it was just some verbiage that was changed. And then, down to the code of student conduct, it was more additions that, like in, where teachers, school-based administrators, parents, and law enforcement will be consulted when existing student behavior policies are revised or new policies are created, that was added. So it keeps everybody transparent and up to date on what's going on when it comes to that policy. That way, SROs and different ones are notified. So, and then, we get down to student wellness. And in student wellness, there really wasn't many changes in that at all. And so all of these right here are up tonight for second reading, for approval of second reading. And so I'd like to make a motion that the board approve these policy 4220, 4240, 7312, 4300, 4540, and 6140, be approved a second reading for these policies.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next, we're up to new business, and we're discussing the 2023-24 budget. Mr. Rumble, do you have?
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, I'm going to give you guys a bit of detail. So at the last budget working session, I made a mention of some adjustments to our local supplement, as far as, so today, we currently pay a percentage of salary as a local supplement. So talked about investigating, looking into switching to a fixed supplement system, which is similar to what Harnett County does. So wanted to give you guys a bit of an update on that. So I have worked with Dr. Bryan and his staff to look into that, and we believe that there are several benefits to making a conversion like that. We believe that it would create more consistent and predictable budgeting by getting away from that percentage and going to a fixed rate. We think that there's some opportunity for staff retention via a tiered system based on years of service, and, you know, adjusting those tiers to help with staff retention. But an issue that we ran into is, we do have some concern in the short term implementing that program. So we've got about a month to iron that out, right, and make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. There's a few of the major concerns there. So obviously, we want to ensure that we don't leave any employees inadvertently receiving a pay cut, since, again, the current way that we do that supplement is based on percentage of the individual employee salary. So creating this tiered system, we really need to make sure we do our homework to identify those years of service and the amounts provided at each tier, to make sure that nobody would take a pay cut. And then, again, just really digging into the detail on said tiers, we think that a month would be a bit of a rush job there. So the proposal that I would like to present to the board tonight is that we think that a better option for us for this year is going to be to maintain that existing structure for supplement at the current percentages, but then to provide a one-time fixed allotment is, you know, we can call it what we want. I don't know if we want to call it a bonus, or, you know, just a fixed allotment, whatever you want to name it. But the purpose of that is to acknowledge that we need to provide a bit of additional local support, given some of the, some of the things in our county that are becoming more expensive, right, rent and other things. But also to buy us time to work on that new supplement structure. We think that if we work on that throughout the year this year, that we'll be able to come with a good, concrete proposal to consider doing that going forward. So that is one thing that I would like to propose. Now, I don't have the numbers in front of me. That's something that I'll go away and get for you guys. But the number that we kind of put on the table was $600 is an annual amount, which would amount to 50 bucks a month, right? And this would be for both certified employees, I think we talked about certified in classroom, and then all classified. So essentially, you know, like our central office staff, I don't believe would be included in that, at this time, anyway. So that would represent the supplement change. And then I mentioned in the finance report, something to do with the bus driver situation, right? So there's currently a $2 per day attendance bonus that's provided, so that amounts to $40 per month currently. We're interested in upping that attendance bonus to $10 a day, which would amount to $200 per month. And the intent of that, so obviously, I don't think this necessarily moves the needle towards the job decoupling that we're hoping for. But what that hopefully will do is to help increase staffing, right? So it's a bit of an additional incentive for our staff to drive the buses, gives them a little bit more money in their pocket to do so. And I believe, I believe it will help. And so I did make the ask of Dr. Bryan, that if we do approve that increase, that we would track the effectiveness of that over the next year, you know, whether it's number of routes covered, number of absences, things like that, so we can make sure that that has the desired effect. And I would just say that those two items, the goal there is to not exceed, at least not by much, the overall budget amount that was presented to us originally. So I believe the ad there was right around the $1 million mark, would cover both of those items, right? So that one-time supplement allotment, as well as the bus driver attendance bonus update. I think I covered both of those.
When is your final deadline for this?
So May 11th, if I have that right. I don't have that scheduled right in front of me in my notes. But I believe that, so the next board meeting is when we have to approve the budget that would go before the commissioners.
So would it be too much to ask that you, as opposed to making a vote on anything tonight, that you have this clearly presented and approved with Patrick, who's with you in Finance Committee, and Ms. Jones, to make sure that we have it within the budget and legally with our lawyer, and then we can present it to the next one? Are you comfortable with that?
Yep.
Are you Mr.?
Yes. Our next finance meeting is May 18th.
Yep.
So we'll have to have one before that then, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that if we need to have an official meeting.
We have one in this month, too, as well. Okay.
I didn't cover that in the Finance Committee report.
No, it's fine. I have it on a big letter over here to show to you, but...
Gotcha.
Is this coming from our funding, or is this something you're going to ask the kind of commissioners?
So I think the request that I had made to Dr. Bryan is to try to find a percentage of this within our existing budget, to kind of put our money where our mouth is a bit, and show that we support this. But the, there will be an additional request to go to the commissioners to fund.
I guess that was my question, too. Are you foreseeing this as in lieu of our request for an increase in 1% certified supplement and the 2% classified supplement? We would do a different plan? Or are you thinking that we would split that down in some way?
Yeah, so that would be in lieu of, so I think the budget that was presented to us had that 1%, 1% certified increase, 2% classified. So basically, we would eliminate that part, that request increase, and that would be replaced with that one-time lump sum. So I think I tried to do some quick math before the meeting tonight. So essentially, our newest teachers would, I believe that would represent something in the ballpark of close to a 2% increase for them. Obviously, our more senior teachers, who have a higher salary, the percentage there would be less for them. Just full disclosure.
So all parties involved, which is the Finance Committee, our superintendent and Ms. Jones back there, you guys are all comfortable of having us prepared for the next board meeting before we do?
Yep.
All right.
Are we discussing, or is this closed for debate?
They're going to bring it in the Finance Committee. They're going to come to the Finance Committee and put all the options out there, and then present it to us at one time.
Okay.
Because they're missing a lot of data.
Okay.
It would be nice if you could show up to the Finance Meeting.
Oh, I will.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyway, that's awesome. Okay, next we have our budget amendments.
So, Madam Chair, while Ms. Jones is coming up, I can go ahead and give just a really high-level rundown of what those are, and then any specific questions, I would defer to Ms. Jones. So the notes that I have, the first one in that packet is additional allotments of state funds that were received and being distributed. The second is amendments to pay for the board's performance audit that was approved, a shift in funds to the board expense account for training and other board purposes, and also the additional amount for the external audit. The next one is payments to charter schools to receive their required share of state funds. The next one is federal grant funding allocation. And then, the last one is special grant revenues allocation.
Okay.
Have any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
We're looking, one of the major, the three major things that helped change our, caused this amendment, if I'm correct, was our performance audit. And then, when Ms. Bowen went to the training, we had to transfer money, so we didn't go over there. And what was the third thing? Was that the legal?
That was the additional legal cost for the outside attorney.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I just wanted to clarify those. That was the only thing I have. Has anyone got any questions for her?
I shouldn't still approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have our board comments, and we'll start with Mr. Kelly.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe we have.
Oh, yes, that's right, we do. We may need her back again, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Jones. Please forgive me. The third thing was the addition, we had a meeting with the performance auditor, and there's certain things that's already in that contract, we've already had to, Alan can refer you back to the exact page on that, but they were wanting to add the addition of the programs under our audit. And the quote that I got was $25,000. And so this is something we probably need to discuss, and possibly go ahead and make a motion to approve that, so they can go ahead and do that at the same time they're doing the remainder of the stuff. But we need you to make sure that we've got the money to do it, and all that good stuff, and what's the best way to go about that from here?
We would appropriate this from fund balance, just like we did the additional, and I would prepare a budget amendment, and it would come before the board.
And it comes at May meeting. Okay. Okay. Would you like to speak on that real quick?
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, I guess, excuse me, so the original motion, when we approved sending out an RFP for this audit, it did include a line item to include educational programs, as far as a performance audit. So I think Evergreen's proposal came back and noted specifically that that bit of the RFP was a bit vague for them to provide a quote at the time of the original proposal. And I think we did have a bit of discussion about that as well, when we approved that, I think it was $135,000 last month. We mentioned that that was a bit vague, and may expect to see some additional expense. So at any rate, those items are listed, so the item 2.0, Educational Service Delivery, is listed on page 2-3 of that original proposal document. And then, Evergreen also, knowing that we were interested in programs, they did provide that scope of work at the end of that document, which was pages 3-2 to 3-5. So that's already available there for review. Yeah, so given that, like you said, they came back with a quote upon our request of $25,000 to add that to the scope of work. And with that, I would make a motion for Lee County Board of Education to approve the addition of the Educational Service Delivery to the audit scope of work, and approve the additional funding quoted not to exceed $25,000 from fund balance.
Second.
All in favor?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I had, I'm open to the idea of doing a program audit. I had requested an example of a, an audit that Evergreen had completed. I have not seen that yet. I know that there was an email sent today. The only thing that was on there was text. I didn't see an attachment to that email. I don't know that we've given anybody else the opportunity to bid on this $25,000 contract, as far as any, anyone else that could perform this service. So for those two reasons, my answer is going to be no, and I just wanted to explain my vote before we voted.
No problem. I just know that with the, for, my opinion is that, such that they have already, this was a part of that audit, but it wasn't included in that price. So we had already went there, we just didn't have that amount did. Now, if there was the possibility that you want to go back out to bid for something else, I think that would be a much more lengthy process, and it's very crucial right now to try to get our children on time, since COVID, with the learning loss. And that's my rationale. And once we had spoke with them, and they explained this was just a part, even though they gave it to us all in the contract, they just didn't have that added in there until they could sit down and discuss it. So, but I definitely respect your opinion. Does anybody else have any argument one way or another, debate? And just want to let you know, it's Evergreen, and the, one of the links that I gave you will give you all the studies of different counties that they've been to, if that helps you in the future. Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
One second.
One second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Now, Mr. Kelly, time for your comments.
Not the still the thunder that Dr. Bryan had earlier, but I think it is, going without saying, we've had a lot of our friends in the community, our firemen, our police... Not the still the thunder that Dr. Brian had earlier, but I think it is going without saying. We've had a lot of our friends in the community, our firemen, our police around us lately, whether it's been for some of our buildings on fire or by different threats coming into our school system. So, I'm always grateful for the relationship we have with our local sheriff department, police departments, and fire and rescue and EMTs. And then also, it's, can't go without, you know, saying thank you to our assistant principals, who are really superheroes behind the scenes, who, when a principal may be the face of the school, but assistant principals kind of do the dirty behind the scenes and get bus rides taken care of and handle discipline in the day-to-day operation of the school. So, thankful to them and all of our school staff that goes unnoticed, such as our janitorial staff and such. We're almost there, we're in May. I mean, oh, excuse me, we've only got May left and a little bit of June. And also, one other note that just come, popped in my head. Read an article that, from WRL today, that Wake County Schools is looking to change their calendar and go against the state as well.
How about that?
So, maybe we're game changers down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to quickly echo Mr. Kelly's comments for sure. I appreciate all of our partners in law enforcement, fire, police. Wanted to quickly recognize Dr. Waller and Mr. Conway, who are in their last board meeting. Both of those folks are instrumental, working tirelessly for our school system with very little recognition. And I just wanted to tell you both that I appreciate you both. Ms. Jones, I appreciate you for all your work with your audits as well. I know that's a tall task. We've had a lot of working sessions about budgets and that type of thing. There's, there seems to be some reluctance to ask for money from our accounting commissioners and from our partners. And I, I think that's a little bit misplaced. 2021, 2022 school year, we ranked 69th in local funding out of 116 school districts. I don't think we're, we're making or planning to make an outrageous request for funding. And I think that education in general is an investment. It's not an expense. I've said it before and I'll say it again. The, the one thing that I will ask as we sort of wrap up this conversation, we've got three or four board members up here that have children in the public school system, some that will shortly have children in the public school system. If you drop your sons and daughters off to school on your first day of school, August 2023, and they say, "Welcome to school. We don't have a teacher for your classroom yet, but we're going to cover it with a full-time sub." Or, "We don't have a teacher for your, your child's pre-algebra class, so your pre-algebra class is going to have 45 kids in it." Is that acceptable? That's my question to each and every board member as we do this, this budget. Is that acceptable? For me, it's not. For you guys, it may be. We've had a lot of campaigning on strengthening our public schools. We've heard a lot of talk. Now, it's time to walk the walk. And so, I urge my fellow board members to keep that in mind as we, as we really bear down on this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I was thinking about, when I was a parent making public comments before the board, I was pretty critical sometimes about failure to discuss and address problems in our open meetings. And I just wanted to say tonight that I'm glad to be a member of the board now and help to ensure that we're openly acknowledging some of the issues that we find and discussing them here and identifying solutions and moving forward. I think it goes a long way in building trust with both the community as well as the many employees we have working in the school system, just to see that, you know, see that we're willing to acknowledge that we have issues and that we're going to talk about them and that we're going to drive towards solutions. So, I think our discussion, you know, tonight about the TA bus driver job coupling and the communication issues that we've had, the audit findings, some of those things, those are just a few examples from tonight to show that we're actively working to be transparent as a board and that we are indeed identifying problems and finding solutions for those. I personally think that the only problems that really are failures are when those issues go unaddressed and you don't learn something from them. So, I'm encouraged for our future as a board, just knowing that we're willing to have these discussions here and talk about things in open session. And with that, I would just like to also thank members of, of the school staff and our community who reached out to me personally over the past month to bring up just a wide range of issues, concerns, provide input on things that have been discussed here. And I hope that more people are seeing, you know, increased transparency and that, that we take that feedback seriously and we're trying to drive solutions for problems that people have. So, thank you.
Andrew? Yeah.
I just wanted to take a moment to do a very superficial, sky-high view of the trip that I took down to Florida for the Consortium of State School Boards Associations Conference. It was a fantastic trip. I was pleased to find that COSPA held to its initial mission to remove some of the overtly political slant to the conference. And it was very, done very well with a very good focus on things that actually improve education. Starting with the keynote, that the opening session was on fearless positivity, which at first I thought was going to be a little frou-frou for me. But it turned out to, in a world where we hear the bad things happening in schools, and certainly this week has been no, this month has been no exception to the violence in schools. And then, we have COVID and the shutdowns and the learning loss and, and all the negativity that we have. How do we come at the challenges that we have with an optimistic approach to the future? And it was really, it was really good for me to have that reset button that says, "Yes, we've had challenges, but every challenge is an opportunity." And so, the, that was the first keynote. And it kind of set the tone for the whole conference, that it need not be political rank or it need not be some of the negativity that we've surrounded ourselves with. But as we are a new organization now, is the time to really look at a positive shift in education. Thereafter, my first key, breakout session that I attended was on deliberate performance evaluation. And I felt a little funny going to that since at least three members of this board, myself, Mr. Ladati, and Mr. Rommel have worked very diligently on a new evaluation instrument. And I went to this thinking, "God, please don't tell me we did everything wrong," you know? And so, I go in and I listen to their presentation and very much felt, there were some things that we could certainly implement and use that was going to be better. But at the same time, I felt like I got a really good pat on the back. So, good job, team. I felt like we were very much in line with what best practices are. And the, the folks that were engaged in that conversation were, were very pleased with what I offered that we had done. And they're certainly bringing in information from outside industry was a valid, valid point. And everybody kind of, you know, gravitated toward that. Then, I had the opportunity to attend a session on board self-assessment. I know that's something Ms. Womack has approached several times and saying that that's something that we as a board need to do, is be very open with ourselves about what are we doing well, what are we doing poorly, and what can we do better? And I found that to be very helpful. I downloaded some of those files. I know I shared some files with Mr. Rommel, Mr. Ladati immediately upon attending the assessment. And so, I have downloaded a lot of these. They're not in a format that's nicely working with my Google app, so I'm going to have to kind of play with it a little bit. But I will make sure that these get into the educational files. Probably one of the most pivotal messages that I went to hear was on crisis communication before, during, and after a tragedy. I will say that the conference had a lot of presentations on safety and some of the tragedy that's happening across this country. That being said, this particular message was done by the folks that were in charge of communication post-Columbine. And it was absolutely heartrending and yet so informative about what we can do when we're communicating with our public, even in the simple lockdowns that are handled very quickly, very efficiently, and there's nothing to them. But God forbid we should ever experience the true tragedy, how we can approach that and plan. Because as they said, waiting one day too late to build your plan is catastrophic. And so, I really look forward to pulling that data and sharing that with not only this team, but the central office team and with Mr. Alversen. Because a lot of it had to do with, how do you communicate the message to the people in a way that they get it when they need it, how they need it, and it's, it's clear and concise.
Do you think you have those in the folders?
I, I have them trapped in this device, so I may have to have some tech support to get them off this device. But it will be, I will do my best to get it this week. Okay. Again, there were other sessions that were fabulous and we got the opportunity to be breakfasted. I was going to say wined and dined, but that had the wrong context. But breakfasted by Tharrington Smith. They, they supported a breakfast and a meeting with all the North Carolina contingent that was there. And we were well represented across North Carolina as well. I know I'm probably over my three minutes, but I do want to thank this board and the folks that supported financially for me to go. And I definitely feel like we, we will have some very useful content that came back from it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing it. Mr. Gassett?
Oh, y'all took my thunder. So, reiterating what Kelly said and Ladati and Bowen, these last few weeks has been something, you know, from the threats to the metal detectors, to the fire. I've had parents asking me the same thing that you've mentioned about, want to know why their kid doesn't have a teacher in the classroom. And so, just like a lot of places, people don't want to work for some reason. And, but we've got to find a way to get teachers in the classrooms and keep them there. I like the idea about going along with what we've just been dealing with the last couple of weeks with the, you know, the threats. Thank goodness there were not anything to them. But the safety plans are in place to protect the children and staff in the school system. And along with what she went and witnessed and heard about in, in the conference and how we can pull all that together to make this, these sad situations that we have currently today, to try to make it the best we can for our district, to make it safe as we can. So, I look forward to getting that information and working together with the board with that to create a, a safe environment for everybody. And with that, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will continue to talk about mental health and the emphasis that I think many of us share on this board. And I look forward to hearing from more folks from the state that will share some insight with us to help address our mental health needs for our students and staff, teachers, support staff, administrators, everybody. We all need that help. And especially now, one, a thing, another thing that I will continue to talk about is that we do need a strategic plan for our district. We need to know where we're going and to measure our progress or failure of progress in achieving that strategic plan. And I really believe that we do need a PR campaign as a school. And I think the word that comes to my mind, just a word we have inspired now, but I'll, I think the word excellence, because we talk about that. We talk about being the best. And I think we do need to promote our schools, just like any other business does, that we need to talk about the excellence of our schools and the efforts that we are trying to make in advancing that and makes it attractive even to those teachers that would consider us, because that's our goal. And I do want to thank, along with everybody else that's thanked many people, because it does take so many people to make this huge operation go from day to day. And just to remind us all that it's not always the big things, but a lot of times with teachers and staff in our schools, sometimes it's the small things that make a huge difference in that teacher or staff person's day. And just want to thank all of them for all that they do each and every day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, it seems we have a lot of cheerleaders on the board. Unfortunately, if you had to pick a role for me, though I was a cheerleader in high schools, it's more, I see more of a, a coach role in our leadership. Lots of us can cheer things on, but this board, I'm very proud of because you dig deep. You go in, you work late at night. People don't know how many hours you put into these things. The majority of you, the research that's done, I know your heart's in it. I would be careful when putting one, saying something against one board member or one of them didn't look a certain way, because the truth is, we're all in this together. My first presentation, as the chair today earlier, explained, I made it very clear how little money our teachers were making. So, we don't want to be going in those directions. I want us all to move forward. I understand that we may have had some communication issues with the audit process or anything else. And it's funny, because a lot of things that you just discussed is actually in our closed session. Tonight is a part of our evaluation process, and I actually have the one for our board. Our board is trying every time to work together to do what's best for our community. But I did want to share with you a part that bothered me a little bit. I think we need to step ahead about what this board is doing in the future. Because every time we have an election, it's like we go back and take a step forward. Go back and go step forward. What this board has done so far is we have established continuity books. We're working on a book. You have a workbook that you have from the moment you are officially elected. And then, once you get into office, there's a guidebook. And there's a lot of things that go into that as far as orientation process. So, every time there's a challenge, it comes up here for me personally. I, I like that, because then it lets me know what else we need to put in those documents as well. There's 79 files that went into our training as of last night. I've got all that I had for the last two or three years. And we maintain the training. Our board is actually taking classes in the evenings and online for the video. I think most of you are doing right before we actually need them. And, but before we go, I think last time I did not introduce, and I'm sorry I did not, but Mr. James Al, James Alversen in the back, he is our Public Affairs Information Officer, and we are so glad to have you. A lot of people had lots of ideas in Saga, and I shared one with him. And I just want y'all to think about it. And, and it would be, board members actually go into one of the schools and tell your story, right, Dr. Brian? A teacher should say, "Tell me your story. Why are you a teacher in Lee County Schools? What do you love about living in Lee County, except for everything? But what made you to become a teacher?" And I think if we could get this type of information out there, it should be something that they're respected and not scared to go to school. The last thing I will say is, some of you already know this, but my daughter teaches 7th and 8th grade. And not very long ago, one of her students attempted suicide. And I have this visual picture of her going out of there, you know, with the blood all over her clothes and then going back to work. Teachers are not soldiers. They're, they're not trained for this kind of stuff. And I would challenge as well, as long as we're looking at budget and safety and money, all these things, none of these things are going to mean anything to our children if they don't feel safe. And Jamie Ladati's daughter cut me to the core. She made a statement to her mom that said, "When are you going to put the metal detectors up in our classroom?" And I think all of us, if we just stop and think about what our main thing is, that we're all going to be able to move forward. And that's all I'm asking us to do. If there's nothing else, I would accept the motion for closed session.
I move to the Lee County Board of Education, go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A1, A3, and A6, to discuss confidential student information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-402, to discuss confidential personnel information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-309 and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're going to closed session. We're going to closed session.
The board is now back into open session. Ready for Mr.?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Human Resources report as presented including a four-year administrative comp contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those against, nay, no motion passes. Any other motions from any board members?
Madam Chair, I would move to adjourn.
Yes. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.